Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wenatchee City Council meeting for Thursday, March 24th, 2016. For the record, it is 5:15 PM and the city council is out of executive session. I've called the meeting to order. The first item would be the pledge to our flag. We were talking about who hasn't done it in a while, so Councilmember Huffaker, it's your turn.
My pleasure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And for the record this evening, we have six council members here. I think Councilmember Kulas is at the walk-in clinic, so hopefully he gets here soon. First item on tonight's agenda, the consent items, which includes this evening's agenda, vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meeting.
Your honor, make a motion to approve agenda, vouchers, and minutes from previous meetings, as noted.
Second? Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt this evening's consent items, as in the council packet this evening. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda this evening would be a citizen comment. So this would be a time when any member of the audience could address the council. If you're here for either of the, any of the public hearing items this evening, we'll take special comment during that time period. If there's any other ladies or gentlemen who'd like to address the council, yes, sir, come on up. Your name and address for the record.
Mayor and councilmembers, my name is David Law. I'm here from Davis R. Neal Law Firm and represent the interests of the Ome family. And I believe the mayor just mentioned that if there, this is about the old station annexation.
Yeah, so we'll take, we'll take public testimony during that time, so you can come up and address this during that time period. I'm sure with along of a few others as well. Anybody else wish to address the council before we get into our public hearing items? See, no takers. Oh, we have a presentation first. I'm going to skip the presentation. We can't do that. So we have an Arbor Day proclamation. Councilmember Bailey, would you read that into the record, please?
I will. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of the business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Frank Coontz, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim April 9th, 2016, as Arbor Day in the City of Wenatchee, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our community's forest resources. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. In witnesswhereof, I have, I have heretofore, hereunto, set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 24th day of March, 2016.
Bonnie, come on up.
How are you?
I'm fine.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
I saw you hand it out.
I did.
Talk to the group or grab a microphone.
Okay, thank you. Hello, friends. This is our 26th year. Well, we haven't done a million trees, but we've done over 120,000 trees. Is that just amazing? And, um, yes. And Frank, it's, um, today, it's going to be the 23rd this year of April.
After April 15th.
And I've given everybody a handout with this year's selections. We specifically chose plants which are firewise, for firewise landscaping, and except for the incense cedar, all of them are.
Great.
Okay? And they're also, we chose plants for smaller yards and with consciousness of water conservation.
And we can pick them up? They got all of them?
Okay, we have, we have, yes, we have five different locations. And we asked for a $2 donation so that we can buy trees for the next year. And so, we'd like to see all of you at one of our sites. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Bonnie.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Thank you for all your work for Arbor Day. That's awesome. Thank you. Oh, here you go. You forgot that.
That's a lot of trees, 120,000. Wow. All right, so the first public hearing item tonight is regarding the old station annexation. So here's the way the public hearings work. First of all, we'll hear from city staff, and the council can ask questions of staff. Then we'll turn over to the members of the public that would like to address the council. When we're done taking public testimony, we'll turn it back over to the council for any action they may have. So we'll turn it over to Steve King and Matt Parsons from the city. Gentlemen?
Good evening, mayor and council. Steve King, Community and Economic Development Director.
Matt Parsons, Associate Planner.
Okay, tonight we're considering ordinance 2016-7, and I have a short presentation here. It's a, a lot of repeat what's in this, of what's in the staff report, but we do want to go through it for the record and for the audience's information. So, just to start things off, we're talking about the-
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Sure. We're talking about the annexation area located in red, as shown on the map. Let me turn this monitor, excuse me. We'll refer back to this map as we need to, and plus, we have a Google Earth map if we need to look at anything a little bit closer. So just a little bit of background data. The annex areas, annexation area is approximately 1,160 acres. There are about 236 parcels, of which 164 privately owned. That represents an area of about 575 acres. The rest of it's either right-of-way public property or thereabouts. The number of exempt properties, meaning properties that do not pay property taxes, 72. And the zoning for the area is North Wenatchee Business District, approximately 89 acres. Most of it is industrially zoned at just under 600 acres, and there's some waterfront mixed-use zoning at 162 acres, and a small bit of residential at 21 acres. There are three residences in the area. A 10% petition was presented and accepted by the city on November 5th, 2015. It was submitted by Stemelke growers. The area proposed to be annexed is within the current urban growth area, meaning under Growth Management Act. It's intended to become part of the city at some point. The council accepted the proposed boundary, and in doing so, we made two special provisions. One, that we would retain the zoning code as adopted by Shalane County, so this action would not constitute a rezone. And we also required the assumption of indebtedness with the exception of the police station bond levy. And that's the only indebted levy that, or debt-based levy that we have. The 60% petition was submitted on December 18th, 2015, and forwarded to the Shalane County Assessor for the RCWs. Shalane County Assessor certified the petition with a 62.7% value represented, making this petition eligible to be here tonight and consideration, under consideration with this ordinance. Resolution 2016-12 established this public meeting, this hearing, and letters were distributed to all the property owners and site addresses in the old station area. And there was also three postings out physically in the property, along with a newspaper publication. In the past, we've had a fire annexation agreement. That's no longer applicable with the annexation of fire service. Fire service does not change with this annexation. And this area is under the 2005 interlocal cooperative agreement for planning with Shalane County. Back in 2014, the Mayor Sustainability Committee evaluated a number of options to address the financial health and sustainability of the City of Wenatchee, and one of the key recommendations that came out of this was to annex this area into the City of Wenatchee to help round out the city as a whole. Again, I had mentioned, we mailed out a, letters to everybody, and we received approximately seven phone calls asking clarification questions. The most common questions were centered around I-502 establishments. There are three of them in the old station annexation area. And then several calls were, had questions about tax impacts. There has been one request, and I forwarded you that information for removal of one of the properties. It is located on the side of the cliff, just below, just kitty corner and below Ome Gardens. I believe the gentleman here, Mr. Law, will speak to that, but we'll, we'll detail where that is on the Google Earth map. So here is a tax comparison based on current tax rates. The sales tax being a pass-through tax for those engaging in retail sales activities is 8.3% in Shalane County versus 8.4% in Wenatchee. The property tax in Shalane County is $11.11 per assessed, $1,000 of assessed value versus $1,131 in the city. And I'll note that that tax rate changes annually with every levy process. Water and storm utility tax are 16% in the city. Sewer tax is 16% in the city, and these are estimated based on gross receipts taxes. If you do the math, it ends up varying a little bit different depending on, on, on the gross receipts of the city. Power and gas utility tax is 6% in the city, and garbage utility tax is, again, an estimated 16%. There is the $20 car tab fees that apply in the city, and there are business license fees that are variable. Maximum business license fee is $570 if you have over 50 employees. The lowest is a $75 fee if you have one to five, or one to three employees, I believe.
And I think, and I think your sales tax number is off. I think the county's 8.2.
8.2, correct.
I think we're two-tenths different because of the-
Two-tenths difference.
Public facility district.
Thank you for that clarification, yeah. There's a lodging tax difference, 6% in the city versus 4% in the county, and then the city has the tourism promotion area of $1 per room night.
And I was just going to say, the extra 2% on the lodging tax, there's a credit against the sales tax that gets charged, so it ends up being the same.
Yep.
Good point.
So the big thing when we do an annexation is to make sure that the revenue supports the cost of service, and that's one of the things, especially on an annexation this big, is key. That evaluation was done both by the Sustainability Committee and city staff back in 2014, when the first annexation proposal was submitted. And it's estimated, depending on the variability of sales tax, to be a net increase of $725,000 over costs. So we know that we have adequate resources to provide adequate service levels in the old station area. If this ordinance is adopted, it takes about 60 to 75 days for it to become effective. We estimate that the annexation would be effective on May 31st of this year. Based on the effective date, the property tax changes begin in 2017, not, nothing's changing in 2016. Sales tax revenue would begin in the third quarter of this year, or beginning after July 1st. The city can request that the county prorate the road fund, because we'll be, for example, doing the snow plowing activity and road maintenance from May 31st on. The formula, formula-based distribution of taxes such as fuel tax would also begin around July 1st. Over the next two months, there's, if this ordinance is adopted, there would be a considerable amount of work, working with Shalane County and service providers on the transitioning of services to make for a smooth transition. Some of those transitions include police services. We follow the RCWs, which requires we maintain the current levels of service. We would be coordination with, coordinating with Shalane County on current capital projects, building permits, code enforcement cases. We're talking about the stormwater utility and maintaining the current fee structure in the stormwater system. Then I mentioned the road fund. We'd also work with our franchise utilities, Shalane PUD. Humane Society is under contract to provide services in the city. Waste management for those are examples of transitioning of services. We also evaluate staffing to ensure, again, that we're providing adequate services, for example, building permit services associated with annexing. Just a quick review of what the service needs are. There's about 13.9 miles of county road that would be transferred and one traffic signal. There's no change in the sewer service. We already provide sewer service out there. There's no change in water service. The Shalane County PUD will continue to provide water service. Parks, there's no change in park services. That's taken care of by Shalane County PUD and Washington State Parks Service. The stormwater, we have proposed that the stormwater rates structures would not change until December 31, 2018, to allow us to do comprehensive planning. Our city's stormwater rate system structure is a little bit different than Shalane County's, and therefore, we want to work through what are the service needs in that area before rate changes happen. There would be a CPI increase at 80% of the CPI in 2017. Garbage, garbage services are fairly similar in commercial industrial areas, so that would just transfer, waste management still provides garbage service. Power, gas, and telecommunications services remain the same. And then franchises, state law does provide a seven-year period for existing franchise agreements to remain in place. That's something we'd work through with folks like the Shalane County PUD to see how that transition would occur in the next 60 days. That's some of the work that we would do. No changes in parks and recreation. The museum already provides service for the region. Arts Commission serves the City of Wenatchee. Arts Commission could then serve Old Station with annexation. Lodging tax advisory and committee in the tourism promotion area would also serve Old Station with this annexation. And animal services, there would be no change. It's, be under city contract. So with that, I'll open it up for questions. I just do want to finish with, I think, a key point. Old Station's an integral part of this, this valley and our economy, and it's a very, it's a huge asset to the region. And so, I understand completely where the Sustainability Committee was coming from with this recommendation. It's fully our intent to work closely and provide city services in, in things like economic development and some of the other less tangible services that are important to a city government. So with that, I'd ask, or open it up to questions?
So I have a question on some of the questions regarding I-502 and marijuana, and I think there's a processor out there, perhaps even, you know, if there's a retailer or medical, I don't know which one. What's the answer, what's their questions and what are our answers?
Well, I was contacted by two out of the three. There is a retailer, a processor, and a producer, as I understand. They were asking about whether or not they would be basically protected by this annexation against the Shalane County ban. And it's our understanding that, yes, they would. They do have to come into compliance with our business license and acquire a business license, so I was describing that element to the folks I talked to.
Do all, all existing businesses need to apply for business license through the city?
Yes, and we're, we're talking as staff as that we would actually potentially send somebody out and actually work through the, work with the property owners to make that a very simple signup process.
Because that needs to happen about the same time as the transition.
Yeah.
And there were some questions about the county road fund, and as you guys remember, the county last year or the year before did a pavement project on Ome, I think it's Ome Road.
Yep.
And we've agreed to pay them back on a prorated share, so I don't know if it was $100,000 and we owe them 80, but they will get paid back for the work that they did on Ome Garden Road sometime in the very near future if this took place.
Steve, can, can we look at Google Maps for the Ome property? I'd like to see exactly where it's at.
Go ahead. You have the parcel layer there?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Technology. Here, let me show you.
Go ahead, yeah. Oh, right, right.
It's right here. So the annexation boundary, you have the annexation boundary, is that the yellow line?
It's orange, I guess.
I see.
The annexation boundary goes right here, and the Ome property is this little square.
Looks like a good place for like a super Walmart, doesn't it?
Its current assessed value is $336.
Oh, okay.
How big is that?
$4 in tax every year.
It's, it's not huge.
No, it's not. It's the side of a hill.
It couldn't be at that value.
Yeah.
.69 acres.
Oh, okay.
And there's no access to that.
There's no access in the, the, Ome own the property adjoining that would be outside. And so, this boundary actually splits their property ownership. So I understand their, their request in, in the logistics of them doing boundary lines adjustments and whatnot with a property that's on the side of the hill. So that's, I, we understand their request and the reason for it.
How many other properties do we split?
None that we, that we're aware of.
This is the only one where- Are the, are the yellow lines now all the different lots or property boundaries?
Yes.
Tax parcels.
Yeah. So what would happen is if they wanted to do a boundary line adjustment to move that line over here, then they would be part in the city, part in the county, which is a little bit messy.
Can you put the orange back up, please?
Yeah.
That's a pretty easy fix.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for, for staff before we take public comment? All right. Thanks, Matt. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
So we would just turn it over to any members of the audience who'd like to address the council, either for or against. I know, Mr. Law, would you like to just get started on behalf of the Omes? That'd be fine.
Thank you. Again, for the record, my name is David Law. I represent the Ome family, and as the council has already pointed out, and, and Mr. King has already pointed out, it's a parcel that basically has no relationship with the purpose of the annexation, and the Ome family seeing potential future issues with having some of his properties within the annexation and some not in it would see a problem that could potentially come up in the future. We did provide to Mr. King a request for the removal. I don't know if the council got copies of that, but I could provide them if needed.
Did you guys all get copies of that? I think you did in your emails.
Yeah.
And in the, in the, the map on the back gives another representation of what we're talking about here. Again, it's assessed at 300, he's, Mr. King said 36, and I have 338. In any case, given the city's tax rate at this point, it would increase this 275, well, the $275 million increase in tax revenues would be reduced by $4. And the Ome family is not opposed to it being annexed when all the other properties are annexed, and so for that reason, we'd request the council to remove it from the annex, annexation. Are there any questions?
No. Great. Thank you, Mr. Law.
Thank you.
Great. Anybody else wish to address the council about this item, in particular, any property owners, or West, or Bart, or anybody? Come on up, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Coontz, councilmembers. I'm, my name is Matt Morrison. I'm the area manager of Wenatchee Valley Parks, which includes Gwiltchuk, Pinnacles, Wenatchee Confluence, Lincoln Rock, and Droga. I'm here to, just to testify neutral, but what I'd like to express to the council is, with being annexed, just a little bit about the situation with the state parks. I see that the taxes will go up for me, and we're kind of an anomaly, because I'm, I'm given a set budget to run on, in which you folks out here pay a little bit of that through contributions, taxes, general fund, but most of the state parks are now been delegated to run like a business, exactly like a business and run off our revenues. So what I'm asking of you, and I think I can get it, is just a pledge of cooperative agreement with, with the services, for example, working with Chief Robbins over here, and I believe I worked with Lynn before, and Ag and Tourism, and to help market our parks and bring more people in. So those are just the comments I want to make, and if we're annexed, I look forward to working with you folks.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the council before I turn it over to the council for their action? Yes, sir.
My name is Mark Seaman, 1111 Okanagan Avenue, and I am not a property owner in the old station area, but I do support this annexation. What I've been able to look at was this map, and just based on this map, two-dimensional, I know there's other dimensions involved with this, but I have a couple of questions on about five areas. And I will need some support from Steve as far as-
Okay. Steve, come on up. Mr. Seaman, and we can-
One area I noticed is just this discrepancy right there. Whether it's just a drafting error, or is there a reason for, for that just south of the confluence?
Oh, that's just drafting, it's just, this is a approximation. The surveyor went through, and we have a four-page legal description that covers that. So the question was, is there a discrepancy along this line right in here? And it's, and no, we hired a surveyor to basically lay out a four-page legal description that describes this.
And the other area looks like omission is that northern area.
Yes.
I mean, just a little pocket between the, the old, or I guess it's still the existing UGA and the annexation.
When, when he was looking at the, so the, the water level and property lines along the reservoir is somewhat, sometimes confusing, and so at that point, it's just a little slipper of the Columbia River bank, so it really has no, no impact.
But that'll be an island of UGA?
Yeah, effectively, that's a Columbia River edge condition.
Okay.
Yeah.
And seems like these two areas that are omitted might tend to make an island. This is near the confluence. Now, let's see.
Talking about Chatham Hill area?
Yes.
So when you do annexations, the objective is to follow lines such as this highway. We, back in 2007, we went back into this neighborhood and had discussions about sewer extensions and, and potential annexations in this area, and at that time, this community did not want to move forward with that. So we see that as another logical annexation area in the future.
Okay. And the same with the area to the south of the river?
Right, right. This area is, a lot of it's Burlington Northern Railroad.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then my, my last item is the Ome property. I support that being removed. It seems like that is physically isolated from the old station area, and there's no access, road access from the lower elevation. It would be, have to be from the upper elevation. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Seaman.
Appreciate it.
For you being here this evening. Anybody else wish to address the council regarding the annexation of Old Station? Yeah, West, come on up.
So Bart and I attempted to coordinate our notes. We did a 30-second improv, so whatever I don't say, he'll follow up and vice versa. First of all, glad to be here today, and I guess to, to say that the annexation process was really viewed as, you know, how does the community-
Can you speak into that mic, please?
Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
I used to hear you as a little boy. I want to hear you.
We'd have grower meetings, and BJ'd be the only ones that have a question, you know, of course. But no, we started the process, or started the conversation around, you know, you do, you do city planning, you do, you set urban growth boundaries, and it's really, what's the, it's the direction in which the city is, is supposed to go, and that there should be an active plan to think about growth for metro area like the Wenatchee area. And so, you know, we really identified that the annexation was sort of first step of a multi-step process, and really to modernize the community and get past the revenue sharing agreement, which really impeded a lot of what the urban growth boundary process and urban growth really was set up for, to give a directional process to urban growth. And just conversations with, with the mayor and the county commissioners, it's really, how do we collaborate around the future of our great community? And when I look at, you look at this map here on Google Earth, and you're starting to see a lot of yellow little squares. And I now live in the Sunny Slope area, and I'm seeing a lot of growth, and so you, these, I think the technical term is rural village. And so you, these, I think the technical term is rural village, 12,500 square foot lots that are being developed in the Sunny Slope area that only need a septic system. And we all know how long septic systems can last. And I think that we really have to be thinking about annexation as step one. It creates some of the financing options to then continue to finance sewer out into the Sunny Slope and Chatham Hill areas. This is controversial. However, I think that this is the first step of a multi-step process. And so I'd encourage the staff and city council members to collaborate with the county around this process in terms of sharing service and transitioning the revenues from the county to the city and likewise the expenses. As well as continuing to look at the other opportunities for collective growth for the city being how do we annex these islands? How do we look at South Wenatchee and really incorporate it into the city and give South Wenatchee the services that it really needs to get beyond where it's at today? And so I encourage the city council to continue to take those steps. And, you know, as a business owner, yeah, I don't like more taxes. But it's also what fuels the development of a good community. And so I'm proud to support the annexation and look forward to the good things that will come.
Thank you, West. Bart?
Thank you. I'll try to pick out just the parts of notes so I don't repeat everything, but the big picture for me is to step back and kind of take names and faces off. Forget it's the city of Wenatchee, it's Old Station. Almost look at it in kind of a textbook situation. It's very obvious it should be part of the city. But with that comes the point that West mentions. We've got to then put groups together, I know you've all talked about this, but then really start thinking how we plan to get the appropriate services and so on out there so that, I'm just hugely confident that 10, 20 years from now, we're going to look at that area and be very proud that we were around when this took place because the right things will happen. And I do want to just emphasize again, it's one step. This planning step is step, another step. And then we need to follow up on the annexation of what I'll call primarily the residential areas as well. We need to get the sewers, as West was talking about, taken care of and so on. But I'm excited about this. I think, you know, there's always different things you can look at, whatever, but I'm sure this is a very important step in making this the kind of area we want to live in in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Bart. Thanks, West. Appreciate you guys being here. Anybody else wish to address the council? See no other takers, I will...
Can we get him a portable mic?
Yeah, hey.
Yeah.
BJ, stay right there and we'll bring you a portable mic.
Please. Thank you.
Can you speak up? I can't hear you.
BJ Matthews, and it was once said that if you keep your mouth shut, people might think you're kind of ignorant. So if you open your mouth, you stop all guessing, you know they're ignorant. So I, I want to know, I know this is a dumb question, but I'm from the hills. Who assesses this property now? Will the county still assess that or will the city assess?
Yes, sir. I think the assessor who's a county employee will be the one who assesses the valuation of the properties.
And you'll put the tax...
Nope, the county assessor does that.
How come you get this second application of Wes? He's a good man. Without a vote. I got the vote on the first one, but I didn't get the vote on the second one at all.
Yeah, I don't know who, how the signatures got out. Voting was done by the signature on a petition, so I don't know if you signed either of the two petitions. I don't have the records in front of me. It wouldn't have been a vote like at the voting machine, it would have been signing a petition. I don't know if you signed either of them. I don't know if we even contacted you, to be honest with you. Because Wes told me you were such a nice guy, you'd be in favor of it anyhow, so...
I'm sorry, BJ, I didn't contact you.
I, this has kind of a borderlining on taxation without representation.
That's what you had before, now you at least get to vote for us.
No, I didn't get to vote further I come in. I'm a, all right, thank you.
Thanks, BJ, appreciate it.
And we appreciate you making the effort to come down and letting your voice be heard.
Yeah. All right, anybody else?
That country reminds me of sliding off the hill.
All right, I guess I'll turn it over to the council for their action. Steve, if we chose to make a motion to remove the Omi property, how would we go about doing that?
Well, I've just, in your motion to approve the ordinance, just indicate it's with the revision to the legal description to remove the Omi property.
Is there a parcel number that goes with that to be specific or?
You could, we probably have that in the materials. I think it's...
There it is. It is parcel, according to the information submitted to us, it's parcel 232022220200.
Okay. All right, I would entertain a motion if we had one.
May your honor, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2016-07, providing for the annexation of certain property commonly known as Old Station with the exclusion or revision of the boundary to exclude parcel 2302220200. And bring those into the city of Wenatchee, subject to the provisions herein.
Second.
Did I get that number right?
It's close enough.
It's in the record from what I wrote, yeah.
A motion by council member Huffaker and a second by council member Bailey to adopt ordinance number 2016-07, providing for the annexation of Old Station with the exception of the Omi property as noted. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. All those...
My only comment was be to thank all the staff for all their hard work. This has been a long process and you guys have put in a lot of hours, thank you.
I was going to do that after we got the yes votes. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you, staff. West, thank you. BJ, thank you for being here today. Members of the Sustainability Committee, I see Peter Rutherford back there, Bart, Clay. Steve Sandman, thank you for showing up and signing on behalf of Frontier Communications. I do appreciate it.
Steve Tramp.
All right. Don't feel like you have to stay for the next public hearing if you don't want to? We'll give BJ a little bit of time there.
You can have Gary come up, yeah.
Gary, you want to come on up and, Mr., Gary, you want to come on up and just kind of get ready for, as Mr. BJ gets his head out? All right, so this public hearing is regarding modifications to traffic near the intersections of Fourth and Fifth Street and Princeton Avenue. So this was done at the request of Mr. Provo and some of the neighbors. So we'll hear from staff first, Gary Owen, city engineer, and then we'll hear from the audience and then we'll turn it back over to the council. City engineer Owen?
Good evening, mayor, council. For the record, I'm Gary Owen, city engineer. We scheduled a while back this hearing tonight so that the council could have the pleasure of voting on which way to go on a petition to change some traffic control on Princeton Street between Fifth and Third that was presented to us in the form of a petition last year. And with a lot of, you know, with a lot of good reasons, the neighborhood folks thereof, you know, would kindly like to request that we change that skinny little street of ours from a two-way to a one-way in the northbound direction. And Mr. Provo went through and did like I asked him to do and get some, make sure that he kind of canvassed the neighborhood and he, and he got this petition, which was a good thing to do and I'm sure not an easy thing to do. After that was done, I went ahead and took a closer look at, you know, okay, if this is reality, you know, how would this work taking this particular block or a couple of blocks from a two-way to a one-way? And, you know, for a number of reasons that I outlined in a, in a letter that I sent to Mr. Provo, and I believe you all have a copy of, you've seen it a couple of times now. I didn't feel that it was the right thing for the city engineer to recommend that we change this traffic control from a two-way street to a one-way street for a number of different reasons. Circulation, you know, if it was a, you know, if we were having a real accident problem or collision problem and it's something that would, you know, make things safer, even though it might, it might make things a little more inconvenient in some other neighborhoods, I would, you know, I would probably be inclined to do that. But I just, I didn't see the reasoning there to make the recommendation to the mayor or the council to, to change the traffic control there. A lot of what traffic control is about is being consistent with signing and traffic markings all over, not all over our city, but, you know, all over the state and all over the nation. And, you know, this would create, I kind of had a little, in your agenda packet there, it's not up on the screen here. This wouldn't probably be everything that would, that we would need to do in order to make that a one-way road, but it would be a portion of it. It would, it would add a fair amount of signing. I'm afraid it might confuse people. I'm afraid that it might lead to some rear end type accidents on Fifth Street that don't currently happen. And it requires, it requires a little bit of work to come up with a plan for bicycles. It's a designated bicycle route and bicycles have to follow the rules of the road. So I actually might have to, you know, have some signing in addition to this so that bicycles can turn right, say if, when they're eastbound on Fifth Street. If we were to basically put a stripe, a bike lane in there for, for southbound bicycles rather than banning bicycles altogether. Like I said, if I felt that it was a serious safety problem, you know, I'd probably be making a recommendation to do something to make this change. But it was my, my recommendation and my statement to Mr. Provo that, that I would, that I would not do that at this time.
So is there a thought of putting a stop sign at the corner of Fourth and Princeton?
Yeah, when I was looking at the situation here and out there, you know, myself, one of the problems was safety at, you know, all three intersections, Third, Fourth and Fifth. And at that intersection there, that's a T-intersection at Fourth. And the, the fourth leg, if you're eastbound on Fourth, there's a, you have to stop and yield to traffic that's both northbound and southbound on Princeton. When you're there, you can't see the southbound traffic approaching the intersection on Princeton basically until they're in the intersection. So my recommendation, although we've got a right-of-way problem there and it's tough to even fit a stop sign in, is to, is to probably make that into an always stop to, you know, prevent any potential future crashes there. And there could have been some there in the past. My accident collision analysis was just for three years, which is pretty typical.
So that would be a three-way stop? All directions would stop?
Well, I had, I had staff out there looking into how we might do that and Mr. Provo met up with him and I talked with him after that. He preferred it not be an always stop at that time. So that, that presents difficulties as well because now you've got kind of a, you've got additional signs saying stop, but that leg doesn't stop and traffic that way, you know, keeps going and, and that's, that's another complicated effort. It's easiest, it's just like we have in a lot of our residential neighborhoods, is just to make it an always stop. So...
Are those brush or trees kind of on the city property a little bit? Like can it be cleaned up or?
They, I think the trees themselves and the bushes or whatever they are, I think they're on private property, you know, maybe aerially they might encroach into the, into the right-of-way somewhat.
If you go look, Mike, they've actually cut the base or the branches that would be in the way. They've cut those up, what, 10, 12, 14 feet?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
Making sure it's above your right-of-way.
Right.
And we appreciate that.
That did open up vision quite a bit, but there's still a fence and some brush and there, it's still a blind little intersection.
Yeah, it's difficult for stop traffic on Fourth there to see that, that direction. So, and I think that's the reason that the petitioners decided that, you know, one way in the, in the northbound direction would be better. Actually, if it was going to be one way, probably one way in the southbound direction might be better from my perspective because then you don't have to, then you don't have to put signs out on Fifth Street and warn people that they can't turn left and have them slam on the brakes when they see the sign at the last minute and do not enter. And then traffic could still flow off of Fifth Street.
Well, I was going to ask what the, was that his recommendation that we go northbound only rather than southbound?
That was the language in the petition.
Okay.
Northbound, one way from Third to Fifth.
Thanks.
So for some of those people, if you switched it in order for them to get to their residence, they'd have to go all the way over to, if they're going up Fifth, they'd have to go around.
Go to Bear and then down Fourth.
Any questions for Gary while we have him in front of us before we hear from members of the audience?
Gary, I guess the, you know, the thinking process in terms of how all this signage and traffic flows and all this kind of stuff, they're, they're, I'm not sure, and help me here with the correct name, but you have a great big thick manual of standards that...
The Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the MUTCD.
That's, that's the one.
Yeah.
I assume that that describes certain criteria that if you're going to do certain things, it has to meet certain criteria or make changes or has, there's some criteria in there and I would, I'd assume that that's been a central part of what you're referring to here to make these, make the decision not to do that. And so I guess my question is that following that uniform code is important, I would assume, for safety reasons and liability and a whole bunch of things. We start making these kinds of changes, creating, you know, perhaps solving one problem but creating other problems. Is that a fair assessment there on that, what we'd be looking at there?
That's my primary concern. You know, my first one was, you know, traffic wanting to go in that other direction that wasn't able to anymore. They're going to start using the, you know, other neighboring streets and then we're going to get complaints generated about additional traffic on other streets. So, you know, we might have pacified one neighborhood, you know, at the expense of another neighborhood. And traffic, you know, when you make traffic changes, you don't, I mean, you can do all the analysis you want and everything and guess how it's going to work, but traffic kind of flows like water, you know, and you don't really know what it's going to do until you've made the changes and then all the drivers start making their adjustments to those changes. So I don't have a final plan here yet for how we might do this, but, you know, I've just, I've just gone through it and with my knowledge of the traffic control devices and being consistent with the guidelines that are required for certain things and then they're recommended for other things, just in the, in the interest of the city and risk and all that, it wasn't, wasn't my recommendation to turn this into a one-way. And we've got other streets that are just like this and even worse. If you go down to Orchard Street in Princeton, which is just a little bit further south, we've got a section of, you know, that's down there, just on the south of Orchard that's just like this, except it doesn't even have a pedestrian sidewalk on one side. You know, and we're not proud of that, obviously. We'd like to be able to correct all these sorts of deficiencies, but a lot of them, you know, we just, we don't get around to for some time. They, they cost money and they create property impacts and, you know, to try to make one improvement, you know, kind of makes things worse for others maybe. So we've also got, we're dealing with, you know, the folks parking on the curb thing here and that's kind of the same issue, you know, in the, in the old town, in the, in the Grandview Historic District and, and in the South End. We've got numerous platted roads from the old days, you know, when the standards weren't quite so wide and didn't require 20 feet of clear width like it does today in the, in the fire code, where we've got people parking on both sides of the road and there's, you know, there's not room for two cars to get by. Some neighborhoods have been putting up with that for years. And, and others, like in several streets in the Grandview neighborhood, the neighborhoods have gotten together and said, hey, you know, we want to restrict parking on one side of the street. And I think a parking commission used to probably hear those sorts of things and deal with those sorts of issues. This isn't a parking issue, this is just a, don't have enough right-of-way to fit it all in issue.
All right, any other questions for the city engineer?
Well, I have one. Do you think the neighborhood people would be amenable to a southbound one-way? Has that been promoted to them?
I haven't, I haven't had, I had that conversation with them. I haven't, I haven't had, I had that conversation with them.
We might hear from them a little bit and we can ask them a question.
No, no, I will.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Owen?
Do you have a copy of the signs that you say would be needed to do this?
Oh, yeah, I can, I can get that to you or I can leave my copy here with you.
I'd like to see it.
I don't know if you can, you probably can't put it up on the screen, can you? In the agenda report?
Yeah, I can unless it's...
Okay. I didn't, no, I didn't bring another.
All right. Thank you, Gary.
I'll leave it here though in case you were gonna come up. I'll leave it on the table here.
He's the spokesman, but all the way.
I'm Ray Provo.
Yeah, sit down, Ray. Nice to see you again.
I made the proposal last May to change it to a one-way street going south. And in my proposal, it says Third to Fifth and I overshot on that. Really, the problem is between Fourth and Fifth Street and it being basically a one-lane street. And, you know, the thing, what, what Gary mentioned about being a one-way south, that would not, that would not correct, correct the situation at Fourth Street. Fourth Street would still be a blind intersection. And my reasoning for it being north was then Fourth Street would not be a dangerous intersection and not would, would not be a blind intersection because there would be no traffic coming south on Princeton. And the other reason was going north, there would be, that would eliminate the traffic congestion at the intersection of Four, at, at Princeton and Fifth, which is always a problem because if there's a vehicle coming off of Princeton and another vehicle wants to come onto Princeton, there's not enough room there. And so with all the traffic on Fifth Street, that creates a traffic problem there. And I, I have the letter that Gary sent out in February addressing his concerns on this and I wanted to talk about some of it, which he's already, which he's already mentioned, but I wanna go over it. One of the things that he mentioned in the letter was that there's 20 feet of paved width. That is, that is not true. There's 17 feet at the most. I've measured it a couple of times and, you know, he, he's, he show, he says that the College Place subdivision was created in 1952. And when they created that subdivision, that's the subdivision that's on the east side of Princeton there between Third and Fifth. When they created that subdivision, they opted to leave that block a one-lane street there. Well, in 1952, you can imagine there was not anywhere near the amount of traffic that there is today. And Fifth Street itself has a tremendous amount of traffic now. In 1952, out west on Fifth Street, it was predominantly all orchard land and now it's predominantly all residential. Besides the college being there and the college is probably has 10 times as many people as it did in 1952. Anyway, so the condition that has changed dramatically in that neighborhood and on Fifth Street is a, is a huge increase in traffic. And the one condition that hasn't changed at all is Princeton Street between Fourth and Fifth. And with this proposal, we could eliminate the blind intersection at Fourth and the traffic congestion at Fifth. Now, in his letter, Gary states that the change will redistribute local traffic disturbing other streets with a higher traffic volumes. Now, living there for many, many years, I can, I can be in my front yard or my driveway and look south on Princeton Street and see traffic coming north on Princeton Street. And a lot of them turn off on Third and go to one of the other streets because they don't wanna deal with the intersection of Fifth and Princeton. So you have increased volume right now because of that intersection, increased volume of traffic right now going on these other streets going north. And I verified that when I did the petition around the neighborhood, there was plenty of people that said, "Yeah, I don't drive down there because I don't wanna deal with that intersection." So I verified that by seeing it, doing my own traffic study, seeing it in person and by talking to people in the neighborhood. He says that it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan regarding traffic distribution and well-connected pattern of streets. Well, if you're, if you're traveling east or west on Fifth Street and you wanna turn south, there are four other streets to turn south to go over to Third or Orchard Avenue. They are Sunset, Mills, Ramona, and Pear Lane. And those streets are all normal-width two-lane streets, which Princeton is not and is why we're having this whole discussion. And I don't understand why it's, it's objectionable to have two-way traffic on a two-way street and it's not objectionable to have two-way traffic on a one-way street, on a one-lane street. I, I don't get that. And neither does anybody else that, that looks at it. And the people that signed this petition see it all the time and see it every day and nobody can understand that. Anyway, he states...
So let's kinda get, kinda kick it up or...
Do you have a, do you have a copy of this?
Yeah, we have the one that was in staff report, yeah.
Okay.
We're looking at it. All of us have it right here on our computers.
Sure, go ahead, Randy.
Can we get your name for the record?
Randy Manery. I live at 1201 Fifth Street. It's right on the corner of Fifth and Princeton. That owned the pine trees that are so big there that are trimmed up, 30 feet. I've lived there for 26 years. So I can tell you how many accidents have been on the corner of Fifth and Princeton and there's several. And especially in the winter time when it's snowing, it's, if you look at the sheet in front of you right there, you've got a no right turn and a no left turn arrow that would have to be put on Fifth Street. And two signs there, if you made it a one-way street from Fourth Street to Fifth Street, instead of starting up at Third, there's no reason to start at Third Street. You only need to do it where it's a half a street ride right there. Then you eliminate the sign that's right turn on Fourth Street. So that's a total of five signs you need to make this work. And right now, if you go out there at a quarter to eight in the morning or 7:30 in the morning and you're on Fifth Street, the people, there's a turn lane, a center turn lane on Fifth Street. You get people coming that wanna turn right to go south. You got people coming that wanna turn left to go south and you got somebody sitting there at the intersection of Princeton looking at Fifth Street. So you got three cars sitting there looking at each other and nobody can go anywhere. I see people back up on Fifth Street all the time to let those cars turn. So they're backing up down that half a street to let a car turn to get onto the street.
If they can back up if there's not somebody behind them?
Yeah, if there's not somebody behind them. On the other side of Fifth Street on Princeton, that used to be a half a street. They made it into a full street. So now, half the time you got somebody sitting there that wants to go straight to get through and people wanting to turn left or right. So you get four cars sitting there looking at each other. If it was just a one-way going south onto Fifth Street, you eliminate everybody, all the congestion is right there. I have a retaining wall five feet from my house right there where it shows a bike path. I don't know where the bikes are gonna run 'cause it's not even paved. It's three feet wide of dirt next to my retaining wall. It just, I really don't, you know, it doesn't matter to me. I got a place to park in the back and a place in the front. But it's, it's really irritating to have people sitting out there wanting to turn left or wanting to turn right and having a car sitting right there and there's no way, they can't fit. There's no way to do it. So somebody's gotta move first. And there's a lot of accidents that happen right there, little fender benders that nobody even reports. They hit somebody on the side, they do this. You, you hear the big ones. You can hear them from inside my house when they really crash. But there's been several wrecks there. If you made it going south, it would, it's gonna make it worse at the intersection of Fourth Street right there. Now you're putting all the traffic down there where people can't see them. If you go the other way, they can't turn left to go down, so you don't have to worry about that being a blind spot anymore. And you've got Ramona Street on one side, Pear Lane on the other side, they're both full-width streets. It, it just, I don't, I don't know. I'm pretty logical. I look at things a logical way and I'm in road construction and I know what traffic control is and what signs are. It just doesn't, doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. And Ray, do you have anything else you wanna...
Yeah, yeah. There's, there's some other things I, I wanna mention here also. About the signage, the signposts are almost all up already. If you go out there and look, on Fifth Street, the signposts are already there. You know, as far as, as far as Fifth Street's concerned, if you, I don't know that any signage is even required at Fourth and Princeton if it was gonna be one-way going north because nothing would change for the traffic coming off of Fourth. It would still be, they could either turn left or right. Nothing would change there. Now, another thing that was on here was, well, he mentioned bicycles. Okay, you know, any traffic is gonna, the traffic going east or west on Fifth Street is not gonna be inconvenienced in any way because they got the other streets to use and there's not gonna be any extra time on, on their, in their trip. The only traffic that's gonna be inconvenienced is the traffic that's going south on Princeton and approaching Fifth and they'll have to go around the block. And that's gonna amount to about 30 seconds, but they have full-width streets to use. Now, the bicycle thing, I ride a bicycle a lot and I know a lot of other people that ride bicycles and they ride them for exercise first and they also ride them to get to work and back. And I can't imagine a bicycle rider, you telling him, "Well, you're gonna have to get another 30 seconds to exercise here because the city's demanded it and you're gonna have to go around the block." I can't imagine him being up in arms about that, you know? So, and then...
So clarifying point, your recommendation is, is to make it a one-way for bicycles as well?
Well, if they have to conform to the law, yes, they're supposed to conform to the same laws as motor vehicles. Is that correct?
There's a point of discussion whether do you do two-way for bicycles and one-way for cars or...
Well, I, no, I just assumed that they were gonna conform to the same laws as a motor vehicle.
If you look at the drawing there, it looks like it's allowing bicycles to go the opposite direction of cars there, so...
I see. All right.
That's why I asked the question, what your views on that?
Well, it, it, you know, it's, it's, I'm more concerned about motor vehicle traffic and if there's a, if there's a bike lane there, that would be fine, I guess. But the street, in my feeling, that is really safe for bicycles. If you're gonna have, if you're gonna have one-way going north and it's only 17 feet wide, then you want over here on the, on this side a bike lane, that, I don't think that's safe for bicycles.
All right, let's get it wrapped up because we got...
Well, I'm not, I, I got some more stuff to talk about here. He mentioned that the changes would cause collisions, confused drivers might be, might be, might have a problem. Is that, well, does that mean that the city should not improve any traffic situations or anything or change anything because you're gonna have a confused driver that's gonna have an accident? And another thing, you see, he brought this up, there's other streets that have conditions that are, that need to be taken care of. Do they have overwhelming public support on a public petition, any of them, like this one does? And one last thing, right up here, a block west of here is Met House Street. And a few years ago, the city made Met House Street a one-way street going north from Yakima out to Arondo Street. And they did that to make the intersection at Arondo, Okanagan, and Met House safer because they did not want traffic coming across Arondo and Okanagan trying to get into Met House Street. And when you drive up Met House Street and you get up there, they've also put up a left, no-left turn sign there because, the same reason, they don't want traffic going across there because that is a very, as we all know, that intersection is a very busy intersection and it's confusing enough as it is. And so they did that to make those, that intersection safer. And basically, that's exactly what we're asking for here in this petition and this proposal. We have two intersections that would be safer and more travelable. Anyway, that's, that's all I have to say.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Provo. Mr. Manning, anything else from you?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope, that's...
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to address the council before they deliberate? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
I'll be brief.
Your name?
My name is Cheryl Atkins. I live at 240 North Elliott, corner of Third and Elliott. So I am one of the petitioners who signed that petition and I've spoken to a lot of people who use the road. I have a friend whose daughter spends part of her time with her dad on that section of street. She said it's very scary and she hopes something gets resolved. Everyone I've spoken to that uses that section of the street says the same thing. It's very scary. I hope they can resolve this. And I have my own scary experience that I just wanted to share briefly with you. Trying to turn right off Fifth, there was a car in Princeton. I really thought I was gonna scrape my car up on Mr. Manning's retaining wall. It's, it's just so narrow. I, I went down there last night and just looked and took pictures and you could see people, when there wasn't other cars coming, you know, taking their half out of the middle because that, that's the size of a normal one-lane. And when there was another car, they were like right up against the curb, right against the retaining wall. It's, it's just scary. And I came down Fourth one day and went to turn left to go out to Fifth Street just to see what that was like. And again, a very scary experience because you can't, you're taking your life in your hands when you turn there. You can't see. So I would really appreciate your consideration and, and the proposal to make it one-way north. And I, I agree that just from Fourth to Fifth would be the most logical. Third Street's fine, between Third and Fourth. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else wish to address the council this evening? See, no other takers. I will turn it over to the council. I think you have two specific motions to choose from. The first one would be directing staff to pursue modifications of the intersection of Fourth and Princeton without changing Princeton to a one-way street, which would be, I think, consistent with the city engineer's request to put a stop sign and do some other things. The second motion would be to direct staff to develop a final analysis and plan to modify, to adopt to a, go from a two-way to a one-way street. So I guess I'll leave it up to you. That's why you have two choices there this evening. So I will just turn it over to your discussion and the will of the council.
Well, I guess I'll start. I don't know. To me, it's, it just makes more sense in, in, in my perspective, it's more practical to actually do the one-way going north. That way, and I agree with, with the neighborhood folks that that way it would alleviate that blind spot if you take it up the one-way north. Because if you take it down south, yeah, you, you can't, you don't get rid of that blind spot. So it just makes sense to me to do the one-way.
I have to agree. I have driven that street and I was southbound and was, experienced a near miss and I've always felt that it was way too narrow. It might be within the legal limits, but it still doesn't feel safe. And I've been through there many times and I would prefer to see that it was changed.
I'd sort of like to see the three-way stop tried first, see if that would alleviate the problems before going to radical, radical change or like going to one-way, northbound.
Well, somebody, I used to live at Seventh in Princeton, so I've driven this road many times and it's always needed something better. And to have it a major bicycle route really worries me. I'm not sure what the right answer for bicycles there is, if you made it a one-way, whether there's enough room for two-way bicycle traffic. But the way it's drawn, having bicycles go across Fourth Street, you've just created that hazard again right there. So I'm inclined to go one-way for all traffic going through there.
I have to agree with that. I think you need to err in the direction of, of safety and just make it completely one-way for both.
Gary, can I ask, what's the parking on Princeton and on that one-way? Is there parking allowed on the sidewalks on the east side of the street? Excuse me, east or west?
On the Fourth to Fifth block?
Yes, sir.
There's no parking.
Okay.
I don't even, I don't believe it's signed. I think it's just kind of obvious there's not enough room to park.
And even on a, on a one-way street, there'd be no parking still?
Yeah, we may need, we may wanna sign it, no parking, in case we started having trouble with, with anybody parking there.
I think with that block right there, parking would be okay if it was a one-way. one-way, because you wouldn't have two-way traffic then. And the people, all the people that live in that block, coincidentally, are the most inconvenienced people if this proposal were made to be a one-way street, because they would be going around, excuse me, they would be going around the block to get to their home, but they all wholeheartedly signed the petition, because they know what a bad stretch of street that it is.
So, anybody else wish to comment, or do we need to have a motion? What's the, what's the thoughts?
Well, I was just gonna say, I, I'm, I'm a little concerned just in terms of the, well, the bike thing for certain, that you, you, we can't have bikes going both directions on that street. That just, a lot of people on bikes don't follow the rules anyway, and this would just compound it. I guess it would, at this point, I would, I would, it makes sense to do that, I've, you know, I don't know, lived here in the valley for over 40 years, and knew the people that, when I first moved here, owned that house on the corner there, and that, my, my first experience going over to their house, that was my first experience with that little street. And I'm sure probably a lot of people don't, don't drive it, that, I, I never take it. I absolutely refuse to drive on that thing. But, but the people that live there, obviously, you've got to get in and out of there, and it's a, it's a real concern. In a perfect world, we'd be able to widen that street, but that's not within the realm of our possibilities here, so...
Mr. Manning, you willing to sell your house?
I'd sell anything for the right money.
That may be a donated. solves the problem.
Yeah, a lot of these conversations, Ray and Mamie, Mamie Hamel, used to live there, had these conversations. I, I guess I'm, I'm willing to take a, you know, a try at this. I, I think we need to be careful, I mean, we need to not just make the decision and walk away from it, I think we need to...
Kind of a six-month or a year trial?
Do, do some analysis of this thing over a period of time, and see if, if that's working, if we've created more problems than we, than we, we have now, then obviously we need to have to revisit this. So, I, I guess that would be part of my recommendation, that, that we do put some kind of a date down the road to, to reexamine this thing, and see, we see where, where are we going with it.
Yeah, and it's, it's actually, I like that, that it's in the motion, that second motion, the final analysis and plan. You know, there's still several things that need to be discussed, and one of them being the bike lanes and how that would work, because we'd obviously have to create bike lane signage if we're gonna have the bikes going the other direction on another street.
Yeah, I, and a little clarification maybe on that, that graphic that I did isn't real good, it's not real well thought out, but my, what I was thinking there was you could stripe a bike lane with a yellow stripe separating plenty of room for southbound traffic, or excuse, northbound traffic, excuse me, and then there, there would be a striped bikes, bicycle lane over there toward Randy's house on the west side of the street. Those would be sharos in the, in the roadway for the northbound traffic. That way, we don't have to, we've got a bicycle plan that, you know, regional bicycle plan that identifies Princeton as a, as a neighborhood bikeway, and, and we'd kind of be, you know, making changes to that by running people around, which, there's nothing saying we can't do that, but...
Again, I think that needs to be part of the final analysis, because having bicycles going south puts them right in harm's way at Fourth Street again, and now, if people know that cars aren't coming there, they're not gonna be looking left for bicycles coming there, so those things just need to be considered.
Yeah, one of the things I think we've got to be careful about, you know, if in fact you go with the motion to change it to one-way, I think that the sooner that Gary and staff gets out there and comes up with a plan to do it, and then my view is you come back six months or a year from now with, how did it go? Both from the neighborhood and from the engineering standpoint, just to see if it's working, working appropriately.
Well, if we do, if, if we're going a one-way, I can't, can't imagine to allow parking there, that can be reviewed later.
Yeah, well, that'll be, yeah.
I just feel, it's still too narrow.
That'll be Gary's call, that's, yeah.
With all that said, I'm gonna make the motion to direct staff to complete development of a final analysis and plan to modify the necessary traffic control devices, and change Princeton Avenue from a two-way to a one-way street northbound between Fourth and Fifth Street.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, and a second by Councilmember Sparza, to direct staff to come up with final analysis, to modify Princeton Avenue between Fourth and Fifth Street to a one-way traffic, and I think that, you know, give it a shot, and come back to us in six months and give us an update in how that's all working, in terms of how traffic's flowing, once you get that done.
Okay.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion from the council?
One, one of the thing that might help, I've noticed the recent addition to the flashing stop sign in my neighborhood, and maybe the flashing do not enter would be appropriate there, especially when it's a, a brand-new addition, because that, that does get your attention, those flashing lights.
He's absolutely right, because I've experienced it too, and it's excellent.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries? Thank you, Gary. Mr. Provo, thank you for bearing with us for six or seven months and going through government process at its finest.
Thank you for your consideration.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute break, so we can use the restroom, and we'll re-adjourn in five minutes.
All right.
And we won't gripe at you anymore.
All right. All right, and our last public hearing item tonight is regarding our CDBG 2016 Annual Action Plan. Mr. King.
So, annually, we come to you with this, pretty much a similar slideshow, talking about our annual action plan for CDBG, which basically derives how we spend CDBG funds for the next program year, April 2016 to April, or March 31st, 2017. So, we started receiving block grant funds in 2005 as an entitlement community, which means we get an annual allocation. Started out at $384,000 and is down to $205,000. We did get a small bump last year, so things are squeaking back up just a little bit at a time. 2013 was our consolidated plan, and it serves as the framework for our use of our block grant funds, and as I mentioned, we do an annual action plan each year. Main objectives in the consolidated plan is to preserve and improve neighborhoods, which is largely been done through our sidewalk programs. We did a neighborhood grant last year, which was the playgrounds. We, another objective is reducing homelessness, and that's done through the partnership with our Shalane and Douglas Homeless Plan. We do not actually use CDBG funds directly for homeless services. Support services include the literacy council, and we fund part of a code enforcement officer to provide code enforcement and debris removal programs. And then, we also look for economic opportunities, again, through literacy councils one way, but also just in general through economic development. In our consolidated plan, we have a target area within the city of Wenatchee, which is governed, or designated based on income levels in each of the census block groups, and so that's why it's a kind of a crazy boundary, but that's, that's the way it works. Most of our CDBG funds go to neighborhood improvements and public services. Already covered most of that. Allocation's $205,000, we had $42,500 of rollover funds from previous years, so we are looking at a potential of expenditure of $248,000 in this next program year. This is how it breaks down. $41,000 for administration, $86,000 for sidewalks, plus we put that rollover funding in, into that item as well. Code enforcement, $36,000, $10,000 for neighborhood grants, $28,000 for the literacy program, and we have $2,000 estimated for the annual cleanup day, which is scheduled for, I think, April 16th. In the past, the cleanup day has been self-funding through scrap metal disposal. We don't anticipate that to continue to happen, so... In the future, this action plan does not include borrowing ahead, but we did want to mention that we're looking at South Shalane Phase Two and Three, and in order to improve better efficiency, it'd be nice to do both those phases at the same time. So, if we, if, if borrowing ahead happens, we have to come back with an amendment to this action plan. We just wanted to bring it up, because we're starting the Shalane Avenue sidewalk design process, so we'll be talking about that potentially later.
So, the thought would be that we would build it sooner and then get paid back with CDBG funds in the future?
Yes, typically, well, we will combine two years of funding in order to do a project. So, our trick is, we have to spend the money, but then the money is so small that we can't do a substantial project. So, if you borrow ahead, you take care of the spend-down provisions for a couple of years while you're planning out your next project.
And there's no problem with reimbursing what we, us with that?
CDBG has a, a specific procedure for doing that. But, yeah, it would have to go through finance committee and get finance director's blessing. We just wanted to throw it out as, as we enter the Shalane project, the next phases. So, we, we do citizen participation through, through activities like our South Wenatchee subarea planning process, we work with our homeless tax task force, and we published this activity in El Mundo and the Wenatchee World. Public hearing was held with the Planning Commission, no public comment was given, and there was no public comment received, written, or otherwise during the 30-day comment period. We do incorporate all those other processes into the development of this, of these plans. So, that's a pretty, a brief overview of our CDBG program. We wish it was about double in size, but it is what it is.
What, what is the shrinkage in dollars due to? Is it just...
Couple of things, well, you know, nationally, they, they were doing some funding cuts in the CB, in the HUD programs, but really, it's based off, most of it's based off formula calculations, that is based on house overcrowding, income levels, population, it's a big, big formula that they use for entitlement communities. So, as an example, some of our statistics have shown that our income levels have grown. We're not necessarily in agreement, agreements with it, based on, on the street interactions, but that's what happens when you do limited surveys, and so those change our allocations. And, you know, we were talking, Mr. Matheson was talking about annexation of South Wenatchee. If that were to happen, that would change that formula calculation, for example. Not only would it allow us to spend funds down there, but we probably would receive more funds.
Makes sense.
All right. So, you'd like a motion today, once we hear from the public?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any members of the audience wish to address the council regarding the CDBG 2016 Annual Plan? See, no takers. Oh, yes, sir, Mr. Seaman.
Mr. McGwin, by the way.
My name's Mark Seaman, 1111 Okanagan Avenue, and as you might recall, at the last meeting I was at, I mentioned I was a new board member of the UNA organization, and for South Wenatchee. So, I'm late to coming into this process, but I, I appreciate the city going through this process and acquiring these federal funds. My initial idea is that I would like to see more money put towards grant programs, particularly because of UNA's intention of developing some programs for youth, and so, one of my concerns is the amount of money that's going towards code enforcement as a public improvement, rather than administrative cost. I, I don't really have an objection at this point to that, but it's something that I want to keep my eye on, I want to talk with Steve about, what are the, the cost benefits from having, I think it's a quarter-time code enforcement officer dealing with code issues in South Wenatchee in particular. But my intent would be to try and shift some of that funding towards programs if there's a, a cost benefit for that, as opposed to code enforcement. Thank you very much for your time.
Anybody else wish to address the council? See, no other takers. I'll close the public hearing on the CDBG Annual Action Plan, and turn it over to the council for, for their action.
Your honor, I make a motion to adopt the City of Wenatchee CDBG 2016 Annual Action Plan, and authorize the mayor to sign the application for CDBG assistance certifications and assurances.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sparza, second by Councilmember Mark Art, to adopt the CDBG 2016 Action Plan as presented. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Steve and staff. So, Allison?
Yes.
I think I want to do items K and L, because we have some audience people that want us to do K and L, and someone's got groceries in the car. So, if we get to K and L...
Maybe they were bringing dinner.
I don't know. Maybe if you did K and L first, we'd make a few people happy.
You bet.
Okay?
Ice cream's melting.
Yeah.
Sure. Anybody else want to come up?
Larry, Linda, welcome to the floor if you'd like.
Come on up. Let's see if I can find it. All right, we're good.
Okay, item K. Resolution extending private use of public spaces. So, a couple of years ago, we developed a demonstration... So a couple of years ago, we developed a demonstration project to see how, basically, the use of the sidewalk would work in downtown for private use. For example, sidewalk cafes like down in front of Cafe Meila and Badger Mountain Brewery are a couple of examples. And so staff has been, had the desire to work on development of code for that, and at this point, we just haven't had time, so we're requesting that we extend that demonstration project period for another two years to allow us to do that and also work together on the next resolution, which is the parklets and streeteries. They really are interrelated to a large extent.
Linda, overall comments on public space in downtown?
Well, the ones you'll be familiar with is in front of Stones Gastro Pub, in front of Lamolo. Ina will put up a temporary. Meila will put out one, and those are really the basic eateries that you'll see that people are using it. The one in front of the Owl really is a part of the Houdin Project Improvement, so that one does not include that. And then, as he said, Badger Mountain Brewery probably has the most sophisticated one. And the public comment is people like to be outside in those eateries. I think the only struggle is just communicating every year those need to be re-requested. And so we work to try to educate that they need to ask for a request to have that permit process.
Perfect. So we've done this for a couple of years, working out, okay, keep doing it under the temporary until we get some code written? Okay. Any questions for Steve or Linda? If not, I entertain a motion.
Your honor, I move to adopt resolution number 2016-17, extending a demonstration project for the private use of public space for the purposes of outdoor seating.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Harold and a second by Councilmember Asparza to adopt resolution 2016-17 regarding seating in public spaces. Any questions or comments for staff?
My only comment is that it's, there's a lot of times where things are getting moved around, sandwich boards, tables, things like that, that end up blocking the sidewalk. And for the business owners that are here, I would just ask that you respect that, because people going down the street, especially somebody with a handicap person, there's been a lot of times where they have to get an almost single file to get through that area. And I don't believe that that's allowed. So policing is, making sure people are following the, the rules is set forth. What's the plan for that?
Makes sense.
That five-foot rule you're talking about?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, parklets and streeteries, which we talked about at the work session just a week or so ago.
Yeah, and so this is a resolution effectively incorporates that presentation that was provided last week. And just for the audience, a parklet is a, the use of some of the street area for a sitting or park-like environment. It's actually a really cost-effective way to, to effectively make a wider sidewalk or the activity that you would see on a larger, wider sidewalk. A streetery is same type of facility, but it's allowed for sidewalk cafe-type use, so it's a little bit different. It becomes exclusive for the business during business hours. Both of them have to be open to the public during non-business hours, and parklets are open to the public 24/7. Number of cities have implemented these, Olympia, Seattle, Spokane, and it, the overall objective is to improve the vitality of downtown Wenatchee and, and get people out on the street. Thank goodness for the, as Linda mentioned last time, or it was discussed, the truck removal. It's a much more pleasant place to be for, and it's a, it's a wonderful historic area, and it's, it's where we want people to stay and shop and enjoy themselves. So with this resolution, what it does is it creates a demonstration for, or a pilot project to allow for parklet and streeteries in the downtown area as defined basically between Second and Kidditas, excluding Mission, Shalane, and Columbia. Mission and Shalane being the state highway system and Columbia really not having the sidewalk environment. So with that, is that clear enough after last, last week's presentation?
I just want to confirm how many parking spots are be, gonna be...
Worst cases, there would be, a worst-case eight. More likely, it's probably just going to be a couple, because the ones on Wenatchee Avenue will probably use those painted-off island areas as the most logical place. One, because you get to use the sidewalk that's already bulbed out in the middle of a block.
And this, this too is just a temporary?
Yeah, this is a pilot project for two years. I would say the, the, the most probably critical part about it is it includes a informal design review by the Planning Commission that would help to make sure the aesthetics are complement downtown. And, and it's, the property owners are making a significant investment to do this, and we, we want that to be well-received and this to be a successful project. So a little bit of public process helps that, helps it, helps it be a successful project for the future.
So is there somebody designated to go through and kind of just monitor how things are going, or will there be?
Yeah, we'll work with the Downtown Association and, and just see how it's, how it's received, see what kind of comments we get back and how well they're used.
That, that way, maybe by the end of the two-year, we can have enough, you know, we've, we've kicked the public use of sidewalks down the road several times now. It's if we could get to a point where we either go or no-go on it.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good. And it's interesting, last year, Seattle was doing a pilot project on these, so all the communities are figuring this out. San Francisco's been in it for a while. They've got it pretty well nailed down, but...
Was it successful?
Yeah. Every year I go down there, there are more and more popped up.
There are a bunch of them in Seattle.
Yeah.
A bunch of them.
Yeah.
I like it, because I think it's just going to attract more people to the downtown, get them to participate down there, use our restaurants, shop in our stores.
Spend more money.
Spend more money.
So we do have some members of the... Oh, go ahead.
I have a question. Linda, have you had complaints? I know we, we built those little roundabouts to avoid the trucks going through the downtown area. Is that a problem, or is it no longer a problem?
Well, initially, as you know, we saw the change. You know, it was, the, the word was change. But since then, what I hear on a consistent basis is you can now have a conversation in downtown. So if that was the method by which we had to get the trucks diverted, they have to be really sneaky to get into downtown right now, you know, the big rigs. So that biggest change, I think, really offset the change. It was a change in direction, and we've worked through. Honestly, I'm sure there are probably people that still don't like it, but I don't hear that. What was really interesting is when this hit the media in the last two days, once this hit the agenda of the council, we started getting calls that, really, the two that are interested in this are the two are here tonight, and the impact, one is into a dead space and one is on a side street. So we, what I think that we might get some interest once something is done, maybe another restaurant might say, okay. But the one question, two questions came, and one of them was, it has to be right in front of the business, right? So it can't be down the street. That was a question. Can you extend your eatery down the street? And so that really limits to, I think, on the main avenue and the impact to parking, which will be really good, too, because as we're doing the parking study and getting a real clear picture of what downtown is. But yes, if, you know, I don't know if either the businesses want to speak to this. Both of them are interested, so it, it would be interesting to see what this would be.
My question was kind of, I wanted a reverse answer. The complaints that I'm talking about, are you getting complaints from business owners saying, hey, we still have trucks going through here?
No.
Okay.
I, I will tell you, they'll shake their finger at them if they make it through downtown.
I followed, I followed a big rig all the way through downtown the other day, and I just, but, but that's the only one I've seen for a long time.
Me, too.
I heard that they're still going through. That's why I was asking.
They're trying, and they, but they have to go down, they can go down to Columbia and come up. They can navigate that way. And I don't know, I could ask, I haven't asked Gary, but the damage doesn't look as bad once people figured out they really have a tough time navigating those. But I've not heard a complaint and deliveries are happening, so.
Okay.
So I know we have a couple of members of the audience that this might, in fact, anybody want to come up and address the council about this before they vote?
I'm Janine Kelly, and I'm a business owner downtown and a building owner as well. And as the gentleman said over here, I will open my mouth and remove all evidence that I'm ignorant, because I'm, I'm just new to this. My concern is, we already have limited parking downtown, so, and I do have customers who complain that if they can't find a parking space, they just don't come. And during lunchtime, it's really busy downtown with all the restaurants. So that's, my first concern is, I love the idea of utilizing the islands that we have down, that would be great, but I'm a little leery, I don't have a restaurant, and I would like to have parking spaces for my customers in front of my store. And as we take up those parking spaces, you know, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out, we're going to have less and less parking for my customers and everybody else's customers. And even though we do have the public parking one block down, people seem very unaware of it or unwilling to walk uphill one block to park in the public parking downtown. So that's just what it is. The sec...
That's Wenatchee.
That's Wenatchee, right. That's Wenatchee, bless its heart. The second question or concern that I would have is what about future restaurants who kind of want to dovetail in with this? Because we have several, we don't just have the four. We could have the Thai restaurant, we could have Ewa, the bar, the Indian restaurant, Sidecar. I mean, it just seems like free property, why not? So I guess those are my two concerns.
I think that's why we limited it to four.
Okay, but how do you decide which four?
First four.
Okay.
And then it's a two-year pilot project, and so then if it, either it works, it doesn't work, maybe we take it back, maybe they end up doing, you know, using the sidewalks and not the street in some instances.
Right.
The idea was to give it a try and just see how it works, and I'd be interested, if they, we try it for a year, for you to come back and say how it's affected your business, positive or negative.
Absolutely.
So I think it's a, it's just kind of a, you know, a two-year trial, just to see how it, how it works.
Well, my third consideration is, I don't understand why we wouldn't charge for it. I was reading the article in the paper, and it says all the other cities do charge for that space.
We, we charge a business license fee or an application fee which covers the use of the property.
And is that different than a business license that any business would have?
Yes, yes. They will pay a special fee to us to review their plan, and that's in lieu of...
So those were my three concerns, and I did want to address the truck issue that you brought up. As a business owner down there, and I see all the traffic that goes by every, every day, when a big truck goes by, it's kind of a shock now. I mean, it's surprising that they get out there, so thank you for that, Linda. It's great, and that's really all I had to say.
I saw, I, I was behind a big rig the other day that made the move at second and didn't touch anything. Didn't touch the sidewalk, didn't touch, I don't know.
That's amazing.
How the heck did they do that? It was incredible. Never touched any of it. I mean, it was remarkable.
Thread in the needle.
Yes, sir.
Paul Kelly, again, to North Wenatchee. So the only thing I have, again, we all agree that people would like to be outside, and it's, if it's going to be a pilot and it's going to be limited, we'll see that. But one of the things I see in the plan here, it talks, it, it doesn't seem to, to make sense on one of it. It says that the maximum size is two stalls plus or minus, but the other parts of it says 30 to 40 feet along the front of these businesses. Now, most of the pictures you'll notice here of other cities, that's parallel parking. Well, we don't have that. We have angled parking downtown there, and at least, maybe not on the side streets, but down on the Ave. And so 30 to 40 feet is actually three to four parking spaces for each of those businesses. And so that's an appreciable amount. When we show this little picture here of, of the triangle sections, great. You know, no one's using the triangle section unless they're flagging a cab or something. However, when it comes to three or four of those angled parking spaces, that's an appreciable amount of parking.
Right, that's a dozen, doesn't cut future customers.
As Janine stated earlier, any of you need to go through there somewhere around the lunchtimes or on a weekend, and those parking spots are all packed full, you're not going to find any plate pulling there. And the reason is because people already parked and went into those restaurants. If those restaurants move out into the street, then not only those restaurants, those people have to move somewhere. They're going to arrive there, not by horseback, and on top of that, then, the other people that are not restaurants, they have no parking at all. So it's, if you could, could be consistent on, is it two parking stalls, or is it 30 to 40 feet?
I think the most we would allow would be two.
Two stalls, so yeah, 30 to 40 feet is in a parallel space. Typically, a space is 18 to 20 feet long, two angled parking spots. Yeah, good clarification.
Okay, I don't know that we have, we have anyone that's talked about doing two at this point?
In the angle?
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your input.
Michael, you want to come up and talk to us?
Okay. Sorry, I'm just getting off a mountain. Michael Benson, McGlynn's Public House. I appreciate you guys getting to this point to consider the parklets. This is, if you travel around much and get around the country, around the world, this is something that's been going on everywhere and forever. It's just more in the U.S., it's, it's getting to be more of a common thing. The, honestly, for me, I have no, I'm not doing this for economic, if, if we can do it, I'm not doing this for economic purposes. It is to add lifestyle, and I think it's, if you go to Leavenworth now, you'll notice there's tons of sidewalk cafes. It's so vibrant, and it feels so good, and that's what brings people in. Go try to park in Leavenworth, it is a pain in the rear. You got to park miles away, but it doesn't stop anybody from going there. I think that with the impact of this, and it is just a pilot, so we'll see how it goes, but the impact is going to be minimal. We, I, I wouldn't mind the whole, I wouldn't mind getting rid of all the parking and make it all parklet. I think if you did that, if everybody did that and it brought in more and more traffic down there, that's what fills not only the restaurants, but everybody. And so I've been down there for 25 years now, and I've seen parking get worse and worse, but that's a good thing, because there is a lot more people shopping downtown today than there was 25 years ago. Lot of empty spaces. I mean, even 15 years ago, you could go see empty spot, empty spot, empty spot, empty spot. It's, a lot of it is because of restaurants. There's more and more restaurants. How many more restaurants are there today than there were back then? So go to downtown Portland, tons of restaurants, and, and it's so vibrant. And, and so I think that even though nobody wants to give up parking, I'm willing to give up the one right in front of me for a park and, and, and a, something that gives back to the community. And I think that you'll see that these, given the chance, you're going to see that it really is going to add something. And of course, you've got to, you know, use some common sense about where these can be located and how big they can be, but, and they can't be everywhere, but I think they can grow to the point where there's a lot more than four, and every business is going to be, want to be down there, and they're not going to care that there's fewer parking. They're going to, they're going to care because traffic flow is a lot higher. And it's been, and it's hard to give up parking, but I think if it brings more people, the trade-off is good.
Thanks, Michael. Anybody else want to address the council before we go after this? All right, I'll turn it over to the council for their action.
Well, your honor, I would make a motion that we adopt resolution number 2016-18, creating a pilot program to allow parklets and eatery, streeteries, interesting word, on the street to accord, in accordance with the intent, standards, and guidance provided herein.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt resolution 2016-18, creating a pilot program for parklets and streeteries. Questions or comments?
Just one comment, your honor. Not too long ago, I've read a biography of Ray Bradbury, who's famous for being a science fiction writer, but he also did a lot of work, working with the city of Los Angeles and sort of futurist, future studies and those kinds of things. Rather interesting guy, but there was a major development in downtown Los Angeles that he was involved in. And one of his famous quotes is that the key to shopping is eating. And so I think, you know, this, this kind of plays into this, what we're trying to do here, that you get people downtown, you get people to sit down and eat, and they're going to do, go do other things, so.
For, for me, it's drinking. All right. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thanks, Steve. Thank you for being here. All right. All right, now we'll go to Item D, Indigent Defense. Allison.
Good evening. Allison Williams, Executive Services Director. I have before you another addition to our indigent defense contract, adding another conflict firm. We, this time it would be Ryan Feeny, Feeny Law. And we did not limit this one just to ensure that if we have other cases come forward, this is a new firm that we can add more cases to. So we would ask for your approval of a mayor's signature on the contract for legal services, conflict attorney for indigent criminal defendants.
Your Honor, I make a motion for council approval of the mayor's signature on the contract for legal services and/or conflict attorney for indigent criminal defendants.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sparza, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to authorize the mayor's signature on the contract for legal services for indigent criminal defendants. Wow. Questions or comments?
Allison, no, correct me, make sure I'm understanding this. That we're just adding this one name as a different firm, but we're just adding this name on there. It seems like in the last year we've done this, like, whatever, you know, three or four times. Is it possible that we could, if we have this other firm, that we can have several other names? I mean, so we don't have to keep coming back? And the next time he's got a conflict, so then we have to come back and do this thing over and over again? Can we push this thing out to where we approve four or five at a time?
Well, actually, our contract has five firms in it. And so this is the year that this contract's up for renewal, and so we have an opportunity for discussion. We will want to take the time to really talk through this with the firms to understand. We do have some repeat clients that have just...
That's an interesting term, isn't it?
Have run through the firms. And so I'm hoping that we can take, in fact, I was talking to Steve Smith about it, the opportunity this June, when our review period comes up and the contract ends at the end of the year, to be able to interview each of the firms and really understand what's occurring so that we can provide for a better contract in the future.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments for Allison? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Allison. Met Hall Park and Hale Park Project. Mr. Erickson.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Dave Erickson, Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Director. I've got three items for you tonight. Two of them are related, one is not. First item is in agreement with the Trust for Public Lands to do the Kiwanis Met Hall Park Improvement Project. We've been working with the Trust for Public Lands on this project for, I want to say about the last 12 months or so. Working on a public information gathering process to work on improvements for the park area. And now we've gotten to the point where we're getting more serious and looking at fundraising and getting closer to reality. So it's time to kind of formalize the agreement that we have. So in your packet, you've got an agreement for the project. If it looks familiar to you, it's very similar to the one that we've used for, with Kiwanis, for the Washington Park Project, and also the land trust with Saddle Rock and various other projects. So it really just helps define the roles and responsibilities and expectations for both the city and for us. You'll notice, too, some of the dates that are incorporated in it, completion, targeted completion dates. Those are in line with an RCO grant timeline. So with the next agenda item, should the trust and the city be successful in a grant application, this project would then wrap up with that grant project as well. That'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Hearing no questions, I guess we take a motion for just the very first part, right?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the project agreement with Trust for Public Lands for the Kiwanis Met Hall Park Project.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Poyer, to authorize the mayor's signature on the Trust for Public Lands contract. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Thank you. Yeah, the next one is, we're seeking authorization or approval of Resolution 2016-16. And this would authorize the city to apply for a Recreation Conservation Office WWRP, which is Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program Grant. These are the similar grants that we've applied for in years past and received them for Rotary Park and Saddle Rock, Castle Rock, and a few others. The Trust for Public Lands would be the lead on this grant, but because they're not an eligible entity, the city would be the actual project sponsor for that. The information or the wording of the resolution is provided by the state, and we have no latitude to change any of it, other than the number. To give you a little idea of the process, the grant application, we would apply in April. That would be, submit the online application. June and August, we do our formal presentations in Olympia for the project. We should find out where we rank in September, October. And then if we are successful, then we have to certify our match in March of 2017 and likely would have a contract at the end of summer of 2017. So then by the time the construction would be ready to go, that would more than likely be 2018. So we started this project a couple of years ago. Now we're still a couple of years of hopefully getting it on the ground if we're lucky. The details of the grant application are still to be determined, and that'll be kind of worked out in the next month or so. But we're targeting about a $500,000 application. That'll try to answer your questions.
That was a dollar-for-dollar match.
Yes.
And where did you say the grant money was coming from? Are we paying that directly?
The grant comes from the State Recreation Conservation Office.
Oh, I mean the match. Excuse me.
Yeah, the match actually is...
From your paycheck, Lynda.
Just one month, though.
Yeah, sure.
It's actually going to be generated by the Trust for Public Lands, and they've been actively out seeking grant applications and to come up with that match.
We did talk about this in finance, and the one little hook in there is, if they don't come up with it, we do. We would have to come up with whatever funds they weren't able to come up with.
Or turn it back.
Right.
Or turn the grant back. And we have up until, what would you say the drop dead date was for rejecting?
Well, all the way up until we actually accept the grant agreement. I prefer not to even pursue the grant. That, after we get that June presentation, if we don't have a real firm match at that point, I wouldn't want to move ahead with it after that.
Okay, that sounds good.
Your Honor, I will move to adopt Resolution Number 2016-16, authorizing the submission of an application for grant funding assistance for the Kiwanis Met Hall Park Revitalization Program, RCO Number 16-1518D, from the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program to the Recreation and Conservation Funding Board as provided in Chapter 79A.15 and 79A.25 RCW and WAC 286 and other applicable authorities.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Harold, and a second by Councilmember Markhart to adopt, that was a long one, Resolution 2016-16 regarding funding an RCO grant for Kiwanis Park. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And your final one?
And our last one is Resolution 2016-19, and this is for a Hale Park Project. Similar to the last item where it's a resolution to authorize our application, this is a different grant program, though. This is through the Federal Land and Water Conservation Fund. It's a very highly competitive grant program, requires a lot of work, it's very labor-intensive. But we have a very short turnaround time on this application. As far as competition goes, the state's anticipating only awarding two grants statewide. And we have to have our application done in a couple of weeks. And it's a federal application, so it's pretty big. But it's worth the, I think it's worth the effort. One of the things with this grant for Hale Park is that we're going to be able to use our Recreation Conservation Office grant that we received last year as the match for this grant. So we're going to be able to match a grant against a grant, potentially, to complete the entire development of Hale Park. And so it's a great opportunity to leverage some funds. So I think the dollar amount, it makes it worthwhile. We'll be requesting about $700,000 through this program. The timing of it, like I said, we apply in a couple of weeks, and that's really the only application portion that we'll see. We don't have presentations or anything. The state takes, they evaluate the application, send it off to the federal government, and then they do their thing from there. So we will know by early to midsummer where we rank in that process and if we're moving along. If we're successful and get awarded, then this project would tie in with the RCO Hale Project so we can combine the construction and do all that construction work at the same time and hopefully have the park fully up and operational by May of next year.
If we get this.
If we get it, yeah. If not, we're still back on our first phase and moving ahead.
Phase one, phase two, phase seven.
I like the aim-high approach. Just aim high, you know?
David, he's a grant getter extraordinaire, so.
He's very good at it.
Grant king.
Better than Burger King, right?
Dave, what's the amount on the federal grant?
$700,000.
$700,000.
And the RCO grant we already got was how much?
That one was $523,000. But then we have some additional grants and fundraising and things, so that'll get us up to that dollar amount.
So basically between the two, about 1.5?
Something like that, yeah.
Your Honor, I'm going to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2016-19, authorizing the submission of an application for grant funding assistance for the Hale Park Project through the Land and Water Conservation Fund to the Recreation and Conservation Funding Board as provided in Title 16, USC Chapter 4601-4 as amended, 79A.25 RCW, and WAC 286 and other applicable authorities.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Bailey, to adopt Resolution 2016-19 regarding a grant for Hale Park. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. David, thanks for sitting through that tonight with us.
You betcha.
Mr. Owen, sir. Looks like you've got three items back to back to back.
Good evening. Gary Owen, City Engineer. Item F I have here is Pine Street. This is, oh, probably a year overdue. Our Pine Street project, we finished up a little over two years ago. And when we did that, we had planned and programmed to utilize sewer funds to install sewer in that road improvement project. We did that with the understanding that we would assess the properties, their benefited share of that sewer. We finally got around to doing that. So what I got here in front of you is we're setting a hearing for the end of next, second meeting next month for anybody with any issues with our assessments on their properties for connection fees for the sewer to come down and talk to us or tell us what a great job we did or whatever they want to come down and say. I've heard from a little over a third of these folks already asking questions. They've got their letters in the mail, and this is just tidying up some past work for us.
So these would be the come-alongs, right? They're not paying right now, but when they hook up, that would be their charge?
When they connect, that would be their charge, as is shown in the exhibit there that you've got in your packet. And those numbers are come up, they're, this is a little bit different than like an Elmwood thing that we've been talking about, different sized parcels, they have different values. So what we do is a zone and termini, it's called a zone and termini analysis, to determine the value and the percentage of the sewer that they would, they'd be responsible for, the construction costs of.
And CNO has a stub out because they would come out the back of their property and hook into the Pine Street sewer?
Yes.
Okay.
They have a couple of parcels there. And Jack has called me already. Said he wants to go golfing with me next time.
Okay. Tell him if you're going to double his costs if he...
So this allows the property owners to come down and talk to you guys before we go through and put a formal notice on their title after we were to do this ordinance, that when they come in, they want to connect to city sewer.
They should be excited.
This would be the...
Not only we buy property from them, then we made their property more valuable for them. So they should be nighting you.
Yeah, some of those properties on the west side there, they have larger, you know, they could do multi-story, multi-family, office mixed use. They could do some pretty big stuff down there on Pine Street now. They're all served.
Your Honor, I make, oh, sorry.
Go ahead and make the motion, and I'll ask a question. Go ahead.
Your Honor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2016-15, setting a hearing date in regard to charges for future connection to the city sewer system.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt Resolution Number 2016-15, setting a public hearing date for connection fees to our sewer system. Keith?
I'm just curious, the reason that percentage is based on the parcel and it's the size of the parcel, it's because we don't know what's going to happen in the future and how big a property it is?
Yeah, it's kind of based on the size and the ability of it to further subdivide and how intense the uses could be. Also, sometimes the parcels may not be right adjacent. They may be removed, but still have the ability to sewer to that.
I know there's some pretty big areas in that, along Pine Street there, so.
Yeah, it's a very arguable process, actually. It's very easy to argue the way that any engineer might come up with that determination of the...
Nobody argues with engineers. We had that earlier today, right? Whatever they say goes. All right.
I agree, they're arguable, you know, arguable process. I mean, we had, or at least I had a number of conversations, whatever it's been, two, three years ago, and we were having the Sunny Slope issue out there that here you have somebody that, you know, lived on, you know, have their house built on their acre or whatever out there for 50 years. And because that could be subdivided into four lots, all of a sudden, you know, they get hit with this big fee, you know, and it's still just a single family dwelling on an acre. And there's part of me that says there's something not right with that process. But I understand, but the person that needs to be fronting the fee is the guy that's going to put the other three houses on there, not the elderly couple that's living on their acre, so.
This one will be different because we made them all a whole bunch of money. We got street improvement, we bought land from them, we put in a sewer line for them, right? And they've got all the zoning they want and all the road, it's all done.
Yeah, we did a lot of benefit to those properties down there.
I'm just thinking about the process because we're getting ready to do it.
Yes, we are. This is going to be not a new thing for us.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Elmwood.
Yeah, this item is, that I have is, the Elmwood neighborhood, we annexed them in not too long ago here. They, the reason that they started talking to community development was because they wanted to get their neighborhood sewered, and they knew they'd need to come into the city. So we got them annexed in, and we were going down the path of an LID for this neighborhood. They thought they, they thought there was, you know, more than enough support for an LID, and those can get to be pretty rocky. Where we're at now is that we're looking at basically, and doing it in a different way, an assessment method for the neighborhood where the sewer utility will pay the cost and it'll be reimbursed upon connection, just like we were doing on Pine Street and we've talked about in some other neighborhoods. So we're, they've got some failing septics in that neighborhood. They're in the city now, and if we can get this done this year, it'd be a great thing. So, and I think we still have time to do so. I've had a few consultants that say they can get it done. And the one that we selected, Pacific Engineering here, they look like they have the best qualifications, could best work with the neighborhood and do what needs to be done to sewer an existing neighborhood, which is design something, talk to everybody, find out where they want their stubs, do a good job of figuring out how to get the street patched back up and the curbs patched back up and get it done to everybody's satisfaction. And then figure out reasonable assessments, keep costs down. So we'd like to, staff would like to go forward with putting together and negotiating an agreement and bring that down to the mayor for his approval once we're ready. And we do have budget authorization for the design at this point.
I make a motion that, let's make it clear where I went, for City Council to authorize the mayor to negotiate with Pacific Engineering for Design and Services for the Elmwood Neighborhood Sewer Extension Project Number 1610 and further authorize the mayor to sign a contract on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Markhart, second by Councilmember Sparza, to authorize... Motion by Councilmember Markhart, second by Councilmember Sparza, to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Pacific Engineering for services regarding the Elmwood Sewer Extension. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Next one, Mission Miller, Shalan Miller Intersections.
Yeah, so this one, I'm just going to try to confuse Ruth again. This is very similar to what I did here a couple of weeks ago for the other project, the TIB-funded project. This work is already funded and approved in the project budget. However, the size of this supplement exceeds staff's authority at the department level to approve the agreement. So I'm down here to ask for authorization to have the mayor sign this supplement for this, the smaller of the two projects, which is the paving project there at, on Miller Street, at the two intersections, Mission and Shalan Streets.
When do you anticipate that project actually starting construction?
We, I'll have a better idea after tomorrow. We're meeting with the contractor tomorrow. We haven't had a pre-construction conference yet. I've got a couple of things that need to be hashed out before they start ordering all the materials. We've executed, you've executed the contract, and there's going to be a long lead time on custom signal standards and electronic equipment, many, many months. So it'll be, I can't look at a calendar, yeah, there's a calendar on the wall. I think I've been figuring, you know, if we're doing well, we'll get the digging and the tearing up the sidewalks and everything all done and mostly put back together by, toward the end of August, and then be looking to come in with this one and pave right on the heels of that late in the, late in the summer, early in the fall.
Thank you.
Your Honor, make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor to approve Supplement Number One with SCJ Alliance, providing for construction administration services for the Mission Miller and Shalan Miller Intersection Project Number 1519.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Markhart, to authorize the mayor's approval on Supplement One with SCJ Alliance for Intersection Project 1519. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Just for clarification on that, most of that money is 100% reimbursable from the DOT, because paving on the state highway in our city limits is their responsibility.
About time they did something.
We're just doing it for them on this one.
Joking. They've been great partners of ours. South Shalan Sidewalk.
South Shalan Sidewalks, this is, this is just a final contract voucher where contractor releases us and we release each other from interest in the contract here for the project, the one block that we did, a lot of work with community development in Brooklyn over there. There that block on Shalan Street, just where it leaves the 285 couplet, with the illumination and the artwork and returning that to a two-way street, and everything went pretty well. I don't, I think there's a few minor parking issues out there, but I think the neighborhood's real happy with our project, and we're, these guys are starting to bug me about the next couple blocks already.
That turned out to be a really good project, that was a great addition to that stretch. It's amazing how much sidewalks and lighting can do to a neighborhood.
Oh, yeah. It looks different.
Yeah, it is.
Nice.
I make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher, accepting the work performed by J&amp;K Earthworks on the South Shalan Avenue Project.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Harold, to authorize the mayor's signature on the final contract voucher with J&amp;K Earthworks for South Shalan Avenue Project. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I believe this is our last item.
Thank you.
Final contract with Holm Construction for the public works site.
Another final contract voucher. So the site is capped, we have our no further action letter, and, yeah.
No small feat.
It's been quite a journey, but we're on our way. So they were good to work with. As you guys remember, there was a lot of weather issues. Now, when the Weather Service tells us we have one of the wettest winters on record, I can personally vouch for that, because we were out in it. And so we appreciate your support getting through that. It did cost a little bit more money, we saved a lot of money on the bid, and then we beat back up with the weather, so we're just, you're recommending that you authorize the final contract voucher.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the City Council to authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher, accepting the work performed by Holm Construction Inc. for the Public Works Yard Remedial Action Project.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Poyer, to authorize the mayor's signature on the final contract voucher for the work performed by Holme Construction for the Public Works Yard Remedial Action Project. Questions or comments?
Just congratulations, I'm so glad it's done.
We'll be doing a happy dance when they're building a hotel.
Yeah.
We have a closing, there'll be another happy dance, yeah. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
So Steve, you see, where are we for closing? Do we have a date on that?
They have a compaction test to do next week, and then we should be able to move to closing pretty quickly after that.
The contract, we gave an extra 30 days, so we actually have till April 30th. You know how you do these closings, that's going to happen on April 29th or April 30th, as much as you want it to happen April 4th or 5th, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think we're plugging away at it, so... All right, I would give you a mayor's report, but I'm late for a fundraising spaghetti feed, so...
Just a reminder...
Who's got media in the morning? You want me to do that?
Sure.
Okay.
And then just a reminder, for everybody who signed up for the Guata Luncheon on Tuesday, and then Business After Hours next Thursday is out at Comfort Suites in Old Station. Given our action tonight, it would be wonderful to have a good presence out there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's next Friday.
Next Thursday, the 31st. Yes, and then there's the council meeting.
There's not too many Thursdays that we don't have council meetings, so it's a nice...
That's good.
Uh...
Let's say 11:30?
11:30.
11:30?
Oh, God.